Okay, it's nine o'clock. The meeting is now called order. We made it in the central jury room at the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street. Would you please stand for the invocation?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord God, thank you for this day. Thank you, Father, for all your blessings. Thank you for blessing us, Father, that live in Texas and in Hood County in Texas. Father, it's an exciting time to be alive, exciting time to see your work. Father, we recognize that no one is in a position of leadership that you didn't send there. So, as we go about our daily routine, as we go about our jobs, let us always remember that we're in the favor of you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
George, may I pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want me to pledge to Texas?
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all very much. Do we have any special presentations today?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We have one presentation to make this morning. I'll let the sheriff come up here. This is for Jennifer Earleston. She's a dispatcher with Hood County, and she has five years with Hood County this month.
Wow. That's record for dispatcher. That it, Mary? Does anyone else have any special presentations this morning? Okay, the next thing is, does any citizen wish to address anything that's on the agenda? And if he does, the sheriff has a form for you to fill out. Anyone? Okay. Next item is the consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull anything off of the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Thank you very much. Next item is subdivision roads and plats. Mr. Lenny?
Good morning, Judge Cochran, Commissioners. First thing, we ask that you hold a public hearing to discuss and consider the approval of the following proposed traffic regulations. This will be a commission court order to establish a 30 mile per hour speed limit on all the county roads that haven't been previously established through the court. The order will read as, whereas the Hood County Commissioners Court has been delegated the authority to regulate traffic on county roadway or on real property owned by Hood County, and whereas establishing traffic regulations on county roadways by the Commissioners Court is provided for in Chapter 251.151 of the Texas Transportation Code, and whereas it is the opinion of the Commissioners Court of Hood County that establishing 30 mile per hour speed limit on said roadways is in the best interest of the county and of the general public. Now therefore, hereby ordered by the Commissioners Court of Hood County that there is an established 30 mile per hour speed limit on all county roadways listed in the attached exhibit A. Road operation does recommend approval of this. It's court order.
Question, Judge.
Yeah.
No, just for the public's knowledge, and so we can get this out, the roads are already marked by a speed limit sign. And what's happened in the past is other counties, we've found across the state, by doing this and establishing this this morning, if they're not marked, it'll give troopers, DPS, constables, anyone with ticketing authority to know what those signs are being marked. The roads are 30 miles an hour unless otherwise marked, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's why we're doing this?
Yes, sir.
Plus, it's a savings on signs and labor. In fact, you can put one in each subdivision or on one county road at the start of the state highway, and that will cover that whole highway jurisdiction. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it will.
So, this will help anyone that has ticketing authority to understand. You've had some requests from DPS on this situation. Is that correct?
Yes, we have.
Okay, I'll entertain them. If there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion to... Who made the motion?
No public...
Does she have to open a public hearing?
Oh, it's a public... Okay. Public hearing is now open. Anybody who wants to comment on this road, 30 mile an hour speed limit on all county roads that do not have a previously established speed limit? Anyone? Okay, public meeting is now... Our hearing is now closed.
I'll make a motion that we approve this order at 30 mile an hour on all county roads unless previously established.
I'll second.
Secuted by Commissioner Dever and made by Commissioner Berry. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Judge, on the development compliance, the first one we have, we're asking the court to set a public hearing to consider and take appropriate action of the replat of 150R, Unit 1, Pecan Plantation. This is just a minor plat. They're combining two lots, 149 and 150. Staff recommends of setting a public hearing for the August 13th meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry to have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Taut to set a public hearing to consider and take appropriate action on the replat of lots 150R, Unit 1, Pecan Plantation. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public hearing is now open to consider and take appropriate action on the replat of Lot 165-1R, Unit 7, Pecan Plantation.
Judge, on this replat, the property owner has a 15-foot drainage easement that cuts across the corner of his lot. And what he's done, he's... The homeowners association of Pecan Plantation has conveyed that to him, and he's turned around and relocated that 15-foot drainage easement, utility easement, along the border of his... The south border of his lot. Staff has reviewed this proposal and makes a recommendation to approve this replat.
Okay, since the public hearing is open, does anyone wish to make comments on this? No one? And the public hearing is now closed. Entertain a motion to approve this replat.
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever.
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Berry. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carried.
Next one, we ask that you hold a public hearing to consider and take appropriate action on the replat of 1570R and 1575R, Unit 7. This replat proposes the relocation of a common lot line between these two lots involving approximately 2,240 square feet. The development department has on file a letter from the GM of the PPOA acknowledging this replat. Staff has reviewed this proposal and makes a recommendation to approve.
Okay, a public hearing is now open to consider the replat of lots 1573R and 14575R of Pecan Plantation. Does anyone wish to make a comment while this public hearing is open on this replat? Anyone? Okay, a public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve this replat.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Taut. Is there a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Berry. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Judge, we ask for one more public hearing. This one is to discuss and consider the replat of 382R and 383R in Unit 2 of Pecan Plantation. This also proposes a relocation of a common lot line of approximately nine feet between these two lots. The proposal involves 1,360 square feet. Again, staff has reviewed this replat and makes a recommendation to approve.
Okay, a public hearing is now open to consider the replat of lots 382R and 383R, Unit 2 of Pecan Plantation. Does anyone wish to make comments on this? Anyone in the audience wish to make? Okay, hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve this replat.
Motion so moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, secured by Commissioner Berry to approve the replats of lots 382R and 383R of Unit 2 of Pecan Plantation. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Judge, the last thing we have, we bring for the court's consideration is the final plat of the Orchards on the Brazos. Proposal is for a 60-single-family lot development situated on approximately 191 acres located within Water Quality District in Precinct 2. It's also located at the southernmost part of Hood County. Development contains two private roadways totaling 5,021 linear feet, and the development is to be served by public water and on-site sewage facilities. Staff has reviewed both the construction plans and final plat. All of staff's comments and requests have been complied with. Construction plans have been approved, and staff recommends approval of the final plat of the Orchards on the Brazos.
Okay. Ms. Taut, do you have anything that's in your precinct?
No, it's two.
No, sir, it's precinct.
Two? Oh, two. Okay.
No, this is the piece of property that you have to go into the Somerville County and down to, I believe, 199 or 200.
Yes, sir.
Come back in to the old Abbey Ben area. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Johnson County.
And water... The water issue that was talked about in Development Commission, that's been satisfied?
Yes, sir. The fire marshal also had a comment about an additional fire hydrant, and that's been complied with. They readily went with...
Not that it really matters, but that... Did we notify the school district and Glenrose ISD? Was that what we talked about in the Development Commission that day, that this is... The kids will go to Glenrose ISD and that, I believe. Isn't that correct?
Well...
So, it's another situation, kind of like at Pecan, where it's... Cleburne and Granbury cross lines, so to speak.
Just like Mitchell being court. I know that the sheriff has been in talks with the sheriff over at Somerville.
I remember him saying that. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, secured by Commissioner Dever to approve the replat of Orchards on the Brazos. Any further discussion?
Final plat, Judge.
Final plat, yeah. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Budget and finance?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. There are two requests for budget amendments. One is from the librarian, asking to move $4,000 out of capital outlay into 489 for smaller items. We typically reserve capital outlay for anything that costs more than $5,000, and so this would be merely a reclassification. And the sheriff asking to move $2,578 out of his abandoned vehicle fund 61 for the purchase of licenses and equipment for computer forensics. I'd recommend those for your approval, so we can amend the budget.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry to have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion on this budget line item amendments? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Item two?
Judge and Commissioners, for the expenditures that are listed for your consideration, the total is $540,604.11. The larger items, beginning with Ben E. Keith Company, $18,394.21 for jail groceries, to Caldwell Country Chevrolet, $25,466. That's to purchase a county vehicle to replace one that was destroyed in the storm. Transfer internally into the indigent defense fund, $112,017,805. And then several quarterly subsidies, one to Children's Advocacy Center for $2,000, to Granbury Hood County Economic Development Corporation, $25,000, to Hood County Committee on Aging, $18,750, to Hood County Child Protective Services, $2,500, to Pecan Valley MHMR, $5,000, and to the Transit System, $6,250. To Kubota Tractor Corp., $106,096.60 for the purchase of Road Ops equipment, to MGM Landscape Services, $27,780.80 for contract mowing on the right-of-way, to Progressive Waste Solutions, storm debris removal on this court comes to $81,426.93. Then to Somerville County, $25,422 for housing out-of-county inmates, and to T&amp;B Boiler Incorporated, this is $37,710.57 to replace one of the two jail boilers. And I believe Tim is going to ask to budget for the other replacement for next year, in next year's budget. Those are the items that have been listed. I've prepared payment warrants for every item on the list that you have in detail. Be glad to try to answer any questions you might have, but I would ask your approval to pay these bills.
I have one question. No, how many moments do they have left on this? Or is this the first payment on this or second payment on this contract?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, entertain a motion to ratify paying the bills.
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Berry, do I have a second? Commissioner Taut?
Second.
All right. Then, any further discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Consider First Southwest proposal to issue $2,000... Or $2,805,000 worth of tax notes.
Judge and Commissioners, you've received that proposal from First Southwest. Is our representative here this morning? I haven't looked to see if... Jim or Andre, either one, were going to be here, and they may have got caught up in traffic. But, inasmuch as we have the architect already proceeding with plans for the animal control facility, and we will need financing for that, I think it's pretty clear we're going to need financing also for some additional equipment purchases today and tomorrow, and perhaps the next day. We'll talk about the capital equipment budget, and, you know, we can go over that. But I think it's necessary, if we're going to get this debt onto the tax roll and get the tax rate there, that you act on this and approve, that we move as quickly as possible to get bids for this $2,805,000. And that's what we're asking your permission to do, is to have First Southwest proceed with soliciting bids, and then have bond counsel go ahead with the paperwork to issue this debt and get it on the books no later than August of this year.
Okay, I know that interest rates are rising. We got the last one for 1.17, and now this is 2.5, so...
That's the proposal. We haven't received the bids yet.
A final bid.
Wouldn't go out for bids without getting the court's approval.
The longer we wait, they're going up.
Quite likely.
So, I'll let...
Stan, I'm sorry, Judge.
No, go ahead.
Stan, I guess when I'm looking at what you prepared for us and what came from First Southwest, this is mainly because of the debt service. Is that not correct? I mean, what we've had roll off, what we've paid for this year versus what we're going to borrow for capital, get money for the next year. Is that correct?
It really should replace that, yes.
Okay.
I think we're kind of under a time deadline to get financing in place for the animal control facility also, so it serves several purposes.
Okay, so yesterday, when you and I spoke and visited, by doing this today for capital such as cars, vehicles, whatever, this won't affect our capabilities for animal control or the rec center or even Crescent, if we should discuss that later in the year. Is that correct?
I agree. I believe that's going to leave our options open. You can see on that chart, yes, how it leaves capacity for borrowing in the future for those major projects. I had actually suggested to Andre that the court consider $3 million in financing, and after he looked at it, you know, they suggested we trend that back to $2,805, specifically for the purpose of keeping the county's options open for those other debt issues.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve this issuance of tax notes for $2,805,000.
Looks like if we do this today, Stan, if I'm reading this correct, the delivery date would be around August the 22nd, is what's written in this. Is that correct?
That's their target, yes. So, we should have the money in hand before the end of August.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry. Is there a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Item number four, as pursuant to Local Government Code 152.014, salary grievance committee will be selected.
Judge and Commissioners, this is in anticipation of the budget. It is required, under Local Government Code 152, that the court establish all of the compensation and reimbursement items to be paid to elected officials of Hood County, who are paid by Hood County. And in order to do that properly, there needs to be a grievance committee set, so that when the elected officials are notified of their compensation, should any of them want to file a grievance, that committee would already be in place. So, that's the reason I ask that you consider selecting the members of that grievance committee this morning.
Okay, I have the slips here of drawing names off of the jury pool, names, and I want to ask Commissioner Taut to select 20 names, and that way it'll give us enough that we could have some extras if they don't... People just decline.
Call them as you do it.
Okay.
James T. Stewart.
All right, thank you.
Patricia Garner. Sue Duncan.
Do you keep your count?
Yeah. That's nine right there.
Wayne A. Winneke.
Ten, that's half of them.
How you spell that? I knew how to spell it.
Toler, Texas.
James William DeCotto. David Wayne Sears Jr.
That's fifteen.
Paul Damien Hyde. David F. Raffa.
Nineteen.
Nineteen. One more.
Joyce Grim Smith.
Okay, thank you.
Should I read the names of the real winners?
Yeah, no. Okay, thank you very much. Everybody get to all those names? Okay, next item on the agenda is consider and take appropriate action regarding the Baker Clearview kiosk. Does anybody wish to take this?
Sure.
This is... These are the signs that you see around the city of Granbury. They've asked that they put some up on the... Around the courthouse to point things to various businesses and public buildings. And so, this is the consideration to allow them to put up these signs at the corner of the courthouse square.
Are these going to be permanent?
Yes.
Okay. These been on the agenda before, though. Do you have... We have the answer from the county attorney that you were asking for?
Yes, it's all back from the county attorney. One of the things is, is that we cannot have any advertising or anything on the courthouse without receiving compensation, and there'll be compensation coming back from the kiosk company, because they're charging businesses and everything. But it's free to the county to point it toward Annex 1 and so forth like that, so...
Judge, what I read, also, there's no maintenance charge for us to have anything to do with it.
That's right. That's right.
Okay.
Is this a three-year program or a five-year program?
I think it's... I don't know how long the...
The contract, though, with Baker Clearview was three to five. I can't remember which one it was, but...
I have it right here.
Are they going to secure them and...
Yeah, they'll put up... They'll do all the work and everything. It's not... County will not be... Have to do anything, like James said, to maintain them or do anything. Well, I'm going through it. I don't see...
Five years.
Is it five years? Okay, thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to approve this, the putting up of those key signs?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Taut. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Secuted by Commissioner Berry. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Next one is Fire Marshal. Consider and take appropriate action to purchase a cab and chassis to be used to replace existing brush truck from Fund 55 not to exceed $40,000.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. It stated I'm coming to ask for your consideration and appropriate action to purchase cabin chassis to replace the brush truck from the Fund 55. This is to replace a cap... Current brush truck that's assigned or owned by the county and assigned at the Granbury Fire Department. It's a 1996 model truck that I'm wishing to replace. It's 17 years old. I think it's been through its lifespan. For the most part, it is still operational, but does need to be approved to be replaced. My intention is to hold on to this truck as a relief truck should we have a vehicle go down, so we have some type of additional response action in case of a fire. I do believe that the cost of this truck would not exceed $40,000, and I would request that you take consideration on that.
Is that going to include the cost of getting it ready? That's going to be ready to go, or...
My discussions with the Granbury Fire Department, we would provide the cabin chassis, and that they would provide the bed, the tank, and the pump.
Okay. So, they're going to remount it, then? They'll have it remounted, so that's correct?
Yes, but the old brush truck, the 1996 model... Yes, but the old brush truck, the 1996 model that would be returned since it's already a county truck would come back the way it is, so that way it would also be equipped and ready to go out for a fire or it's needed for a fire.
Ray, I know you're new and, but you're Toller Fireman as well, but I think, is this brush truck number nine?
No, this is brush truck one.
I know, but have we gone through the whole cycle of everyone getting a brush truck?
Yes, sir. The court has been proactive on replacing these trucks as they are experiencing wear and this would be the last truck in this current rotation.
And you wanna keep this brush truck to make it like a relief or a backup truck?
Yes, sir. Should another brush truck in another station go down, I'd like to keep this one in, on the rolls at the Fire Marshal's office to be able to place it in that station while that truck, if another truck were to go down and need repairs.
Fund 55 I see on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Barry, seconded by Commissioner Dever. Is any further discussion on replacement of the brush truck from Fund 55 for not to exceed $40,000?
Only discussion I'd have is, I know we're gonna have budgets the next three days. You're gonna come back with, I know that you've got good news and better news on the pumpers.
Yes, sir.
But in your three-year plan, are you gonna keep replacing brush trucks? You're gonna look at engines? What are you, what are you gonna do or is that too much of a loaded question?
Right now, future discussions during the budget over the next couple of days, I am gonna be requesting that we continue the brush truck rotation. I've not addressed the pumper situation right now, I'm waiting to see the final repairs on the trucks that I'm working on right now to see what their condition and potential lifespan will be.
We're getting better news on pumper trucks than what we thought from the start, haven't we?
Absolutely, sir.
Yeah, kinda doing your homework and...
Yes, sir.
Follow-up checks on the...
We've been working on that. When I made the request to make those repairs, at that time I had requested $90,000 for repairs to several trucks. I have a preliminary return right now, it's not set in stone, but on the Engine 82, which is assigned out of the con plantation right now, they're saying potential repair may be $3,500 and not the potential $20,000 to $25,000 we were expecting.
That's real good news.
Ray has been keeping touch with me on this and probably the other court members too. They come back with the bid, where we're taking these trucks, having them looked at, and they say it's gonna take this much and he's taken them somewhere else and having them looked at, am I correct, Ray? And then kinda saying, hey, we don't have to do all this work that they're requiring us to do.
Yes, sir. I've also been working with the Fire Chiefs individually on repairs that they might be able to make in-house. I had one truck up in Lepan that had a valve issue that they were able to actually go in and clean the valve and get it to working without any problems or any major cost.
Saving us some money.
Good. I have a motion and a second on this is if there's no more discussion, I'm calling for question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I think discuss and consider replacement vehicle for the Fire Marshal's office.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to bring this in for discussion and also bring it forward during the budget process for the next two days, make you aware that you'd be hearing this again. I'm looking to replace a truck in my office. Right now I have four vehicles assigned, two are in good shape without problems. I have a Ford Crown Victoria, police package vehicle that's having some electrical issues. At this time, I don't, I'm not for sure that it would pass a state inspection. I would like to work, I'm looking to consider replacing that vehicle. I'd like to go route of a Tahoe-style vehicle similar to what the Sheriff's Department is using. This would be a more all-around vehicle as we do go off-road into some rough areas and I don't think a Crown Vic, police package vehicle is sufficient for that. This would give a higher clearance and a sturdier vehicle. It'd also give additional storage capacity to be able to carry the equipment that we need to do our investigations.
I believe you said fully equipped with the lights that you need and everything, it's about $35,000?
That's what I'm believing it to be. I don't have anything written up at this time to present to the court, but after speaking with members of the Sheriff's Department based on their past bid specifications, the cost of the truck that I was able to obtain through them, which is gonna be through the Texas Smart Buy State Contract that comes through reliable Chevrolet, the cost of the vehicle plus the add-ons would be, I don't believe, to exceed $35,000.
We discussed, we discussed the pickup on this too. You kinda wanted more security in the Tahoe than you did the pickup as far as keeping stuff.
Yes, sir. While I could utilize a truck provided it had some type of camper or bed cover, the equipment that I carry, plus also if I'm transporting any evidence, I'd rather have an enclosed vehicle to keep that, those items secure.
Yeah, first thought come to my mind, pick, I'm a pickup man, but you kinda, you know, explain. That's all right. Kinda explained that you had more security in the Tahoe than you would pickup.
Yes, sir.
So, that's why we borrowed the 2.8 this morning. So, you're gonna come back and budget and we're gonna discuss this as a capital item, is that correct? I mean...
We can, yes, sir.
So, you'll have specifics and specs by, by your, tomorrow when you're bringing it in, correct?
My plan, yes, sir.
All right, so no action needs to be taken on this today, is that correct?
Unless you just want to. No.
Not particularly, not till I see it in writing, okay?
I understand.
Okay.
Bring in the specs at the budget, okay?
Yes, sir.
So, we're going to table this until we get some specifics on the cost then, right?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make you aware of it that it, I was wanting to make...
Here miles that Crown Vic you're wanting to replace?
It's a 2008 model.
How many miles?
It's sitting at about 72,000.
But it's having electrical problems as well?
Yes, sir.
Dash lights and instrument gauges and things like that?
And stuff like that. I've already had it looked into and it would be an electrical diagnostic, they weren't able to give me an exact cost of what that diagnostic would be, much less the cost of repair.
And you're, you're gonna put that on the, with the purchasing department to sell, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, well, I'll be glad to discuss that at budget.
All right, I entertain a motion to table this.
So, move.
Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Made the motion by Commissioner Barry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Discuss, take appropriate action on construction of Emergency Operations Center. Alan?
Judge, Commissioners, how are y'all this morning? I'd like to start with a brief update of what we've been doing over the last couple of weeks. We've been working very closely with the city and I would like to thank the court for all of your participation in the meeting that we had with the city. We received a very favorable outcome in dealing with certain specific issues with the ELC and its placement on the side and its configuration and its durability to serve the purpose for an emergency operations center. So, we were very happy with that outcome and we have proceeded. This morning, I'd like to report to you that I met with our CMAR contractor yesterday afternoon. We went over some of the costing and the schedule. With your permission this morning, depending on your action, I will be prepared to get with purchasing, to make the appropriate advertisement so that we can advertise the bidding, which would start officially today with your recognition if you choose to move forward. We would open bids on July the 11th, which is about two and a half weeks or two weeks and two days. And then we would like to bring the initial results of that bid opening back to you on your July 16th meeting. This is about as short a period of time that we could take to bid the project and get representative bids. And even at that point in time, as we've discussed in the past, if we do not feel like we get representative bids in certain categories, then we would take and rebid those, but we're very anxious. The contractor has made contacts with several subs. If there are any additional local subcontractors that we're aware of, either through your offices or purchasing or anyone else here in the county, we would like to take, make phone contact with those from our office and the contractor's office the next few days, so we make sure we have as good a participation and local participation as possible. We, with the bids, they would be opened at modern contractors' offices, that's a typical practice because they have access to all the emails, the fax machines, et cetera, and subcontractors are used to taking, sending those bids to those locations so that we can take and compile them there. Before we leave that afternoon, everyone is, from the courts invited, along with any other staff members that would need to be present, but we provide a complete copy of all bids that afternoon and we have sort of a, what we call a lockbox type of arrangement where they, where they take and come in. As far as the overall cost, we have been giving periodic reports and we expect to have our, all of our drawings in this afternoon to be distributed electronically to our contractor and our subcontractors. I have a brief overview this morning of both projects. The animal control, I know it's not on the, on the calendar this morning, but I do have sort of an update on it. It's running obviously two or three weeks behind simply because of the duration of it and the fact that we're not under a grant deadline. The last thing on the grant, I would like to propose that we have a grant meeting to make sure that we sit, review all of the requirements of the grant along with each individual, you know, particular case and steps that have to be taken because as we've gone through this before, sometimes they change those rules just ever so slightly and we wanna make sure we stay on top of those well in advance of any deadlines that might be interim deadlines or any particular amount of information that might be required. Contractor's familiar with those requirements, he's done projects under those as we have as well and would be using the Davis-Bacon Act, so...
When you, Alan, when you send out an email for the grant meeting, just make sure you copy the treasurer, the auditor and the sheriff's department so that in our past time, we've had problems, make sure that all three of those entities are invited or involved, okay?
Okay, that would be...
And as well as purchasing, I'm sorry. But the sheriff, I believe, obtained the grant, is that correct, Roger?
Correct.
Okay.
Sheriff, auditor?
Treasurer and purchasing, just make sure they're in the loop so that we don't have a problem with non-payment on this grant.
Right, we're still scheduled, with the contractor, we're still scheduled figure, finish on February 1st for substantial completion on the ELC portion of it. And I think one of the main issues that we will be looking at when we review the grant criteria is within the building itself, and I have what we're going out to bid on this morning, within, I just brought the site plan and the main floor plan, is we have delineated what we consider to be the main portion of the ELC and the portion that would be, that would fall under the certificate of occupancy for that particular portion to satisfy the grant. We wanna make sure that there's not any contingent requirements on the additional space that we have in the building so that there's no incumbences there on the main grant. So, let me give you a copy of these this morning. As we've also said, as we proceed through this process, the process of costing is actually never really complete until the end of the job. Our contractor is very well of that, very well aware of that, and as we proceed through this process, he will continue to look for what we call best practices. That's value engineering, that's comparison of bids, rebidding, whatever's necessary to get us the best value for the county for the type of project that we have going forward. Are there any questions this morning? You might notice too that, that's one reason that we have draft on the cost estimate. In looking at that, I thought the last time several of us met, there was a question about the Cleveland ELC and what it cost. In going back and comparing those costs, I found that the Cleveland ELC with a little less than 5,000 square feet came in at a total project cost, not counting their furniture, phone, IT or security, at $216 a foot. Our initial costing on our ELC, because we're right at 9,007 square feet, we're looking for the base building including the contractor's fee at $164.01. There are still some issues to be resolved as we move forward because of the timeframe. We'll be discussing landscaping, paving, IT, security, et cetera, similar to those others, but even looking at those, we're still under the cost for the smaller version that was produced in Cleveland, so...
Which is what told when you have that?
Total on that was $203 a foot. It was, if you do, on the second page of the alternate, where we have the alternates there, where we're talking about site demo and earthwork, which there's consideration there that may be able to be performed less expensively with some earthwork that's provided by the county, some dirt. The erosion control, that's part of it, depends on who does it, is who ends up being responsible for that. Lime stabilization, we have not, as of this date, all of our consultants have performed very rapidly and very thoroughly, but with surveying and soils testing, this is their extreme busy season, we don't expect to receive those results for another two or three days. So, part of the lime stabilization, that is strictly conjecture on our contractor's part, we want to avoid, and we've heard this loud and clear, we wanna make sure we consider everything for the possibility of what might happen because we don't wanna come back later for a change order. You know, we have included piers, we have included a structural slab so that we've, we've had preliminary reports that the soil in this area with being the black gumbo, if we don't happen to rest over the rock, is very highly expansive and that can be very detrimental to the overall foundation, so we have made preparations for that. As we go forward, these will all be identified and categorized to the penny so that if we do not use them, that all those funds would come back to us. The same as if we hit water, and I almost say that with a smile on my face, as dry as it's been, but there are occasions where we will hit a spring or something to that effect when we're drilling piers, and so we have prepared for these to be cased as well. So, knowing how he has prepared this and trying to make allowances for everything that could come up, you know, I feel very comfortable with his numbers and coming in slightly under the cost for the smaller version that we had before, I think contractor's working very hard for us at this point in time, so... I would recommend, if it be your choice, to proceed with the bidding process, again realizing that the only thing we're obligated to at this particular point in time is his pre-construction fee.
Okay, does any, Commissioner have any questions?
So, you'll open bids on July the 11th, do you have an address on that?
I don't have it with me, but I will, I will send that out in the email as a recap of today's meeting.
I believe last time we approved going ahead with this, so this is just basically an update, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. There's, I don't think there's any action to be taken. Does anybody have any other questions, Mr. McGee? All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you. It is... You want to talk to him?
No.
That's the last item. Now, 9:46 and we're adjourned.